July 9th, regular business meeting of City Council. Sanderson, would you please lead us in the --
Yes. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. Remind those in attendance that if you wish to speak this evening, assist in comment period, or for the public hearing, that we'll just ask that you sign up in the back of the room, in the back of the council chamber should do so. First item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, five nothing. Next on the agenda is matters from council members. Anybody, anybody have anything to share this evening?
Mayor Short, I'd like to officially congratulate you for being the new mayor and Vice Mayor Robert Henderson there next to you. And congratulations and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bruce.
Anything else?
I just want to echo that. It's an honor and a privilege to serve as mayor and I look forward to continuing to do great things in our city. It's an exciting time for the city of Waynesboro and I'm excited about the team that we've got up here to help lead that charge. And I also personally want to thank Mayor Allen for his service and years of service and leadership. I feel very fortunate to have spent the last couple of years under your wings, so to speak. So, I appreciate your leadership. Also want to thank Bobby for his willingness to service Vice Mayor and that role and it's important. And then just a couple of updates. This upcoming week, Mr. Hamp, I'll be attending the VML committees for the next legislative update session in Richmond. Should be an all-day sort of event. I've joined the Human Development Education Committee again, so I'd look forward to that conversation with counterparts from across the state. And also just want to say that I'm particularly excited about this meeting and future meetings as we take time to recognize the great employees that we have here in the city. It is a time of, an exciting time in the city and there are so many different nuances of all the different departments and leadership roles throughout. And so I'm looking forward to acknowledging that work as we move forward. So with that, item four on the agenda is to recognize employees from various public safety agencies for their exceptional service to the community. Mr. Hamp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First employee that we're recognizing this evening is Mr. William Hall, affectionately known as Billy to his colleagues in the organization. On May 17th of this year, Billy Hall, Waynesboro EOC telecommunicator, was awarded the Blue Ridge Crisis Intervention Team's Communications Officer of the Year for 2018. He was selected for this award for his service on a domestic violence call that occurred in February of this year. A female victim had been physically assaulted by her husband in the presence of her children. Mr. Hall, applying the skills taught in crisis intervention team training, worked with the caller to keep her and her children calm and safe until the arrival of law enforcement. Mr. Hall also obtained vital information that ultimately led to the arrest and successful prosecution in the case. Commonwealth Attorney David Ledbetter remarked that Mr. Hall's handling of the call and appropriate questioning garnered a plea agreement for the suspect. Mr. Ledbetter further noted that the tape recording of the call was compelling for the suspect in his legal representation. Mr. Hall's work on the call was exceptional. The victim witness coordinator from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, Ms. Kathy Jenkins, made the following statement in an email to Mr. Kreitzer, Mr. Hall's supervisor. Dear Director Kreitzer, I wish to extend my appreciation to the individual dispatcher who handled this call. I know that all of your dispatchers do a tremendous job, but this call was handled with extreme sensitivity and thoughtfulness, and I wish to commend him for his caring professionalism. Thank you for all that you do, and all that your staff do to help the citizens of Waynesboro. Signed, Kathy. A little bit about CIT training. It is an invaluable part of the overall training for first responders, including communications officers. Mr. Hall's performance in this incident is a clear demonstration of its effectiveness and the impact that communication officers' roles play in our public safety system. CIT training is available to all first responders, including the communication officers. Billy completed his 40-hour CIT training in the program in 2015. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge Billy, if he would stand up. Billy received his award earlier, so we wanted to take the opportunity to make sure that his colleagues locally and the community locally were aware of his outstanding performance and the recognition that he received for that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. We're so proud of you. Thank you.
Our second recognition this weekend goes to a group of individuals and shifts. We'll be recognizing EOC telecommunicator Rachel Sprouse, EOC Supervisor Ronnie Sweet, who is not able to attend the meeting this evening, Waynesboro Police Department Officer Jacob Cothran, Waynesboro Fire Department A-Shift, and members of the Waynesboro First Aid Crew. On Tuesday, May 15th, 7:30 a.m., excuse me, a 911 call was received for a subject who was found unresponsive and not breathing at his home. Communications Officer Rachel Sprouse, using her training established and established emergency medical dispatch protocols, immediately provided CPR instructions to the caller while Supervisor Ronald Sweet immediately dispatched fire police and EMS to the scene. CPR was maintained by the caller through the continued prompting by dispatcher Sprouse until the arrival of Police Officer Jacob Cothran, which occurred within four minutes of the initial 911 call. Officer Cothran applied and prepared the AED, or Automated External Defibrillator, to administer a shock, which subsequently restarted the subject's heart. EMS and fire had arrived also to provide advanced life support care for the patient and transported him to Augusta Health where he was treated for a heart attack and subsequently released home a few days later. Research has clearly shown that the sooner CPR and defibrillation can be delivered to a patient in cardiac arrest will significantly improve the chance for survival. This incident clearly illustrates or demonstrates that communication officers provide pre-arrival instructions routinely for a variety of medical and other types of emergencies prior to the arrival of first responders. These pre-arrival instructions have a significant impact on outcomes in emergency incidents and are often credited with contributing to saving a life. Communications Officer Rachel Sprouse's CPR instructions, Supervisor Sweet's rapid dispatch of emergency services, and the use of AED by Officer Jacob Cothran directly contributed to a life saved, as did the additional support provided by the Waynesboro First Aid Crew and Waynesboro Fire Department. The city of Waynesboro's Emergency Communications Center, commonly known as an EOC, is an accredited emergency medical dispatch public safety answering point by the Virginia Office of EMS, and the city uses priority dispatch systems that ensure that the most appropriate public safety resources are dispatched in emergency situations. The Waynesboro Police Department was one of the first police departments in Virginia to place AEDs on police vehicles in 1997, and they have been used in countless, excuse me, used countless times and have been crucial in saving lives. Police officers by nature of patrolling are often closer to medical emergency scenes and can arrive at cardiac arrest in advance of other responders. Pre-arrival CPR instructions and rapid defibrillation saves lives, and Waynesboro's Integrated Emergency Response System clearly demonstrates its effectiveness. So this evening, we'd like to specifically recognize Ms. Rachel Sprouse. So, Mr. Kreitzer, if you would do that.
It gives me great honor to present Rachel with a lifesaving award. She's been with us for 11 years this year and is one of our lead telecommunications, and we're very fortunate to have her on staff. Rachel, thank you very much.
I think Chief Wilhelm has an award and recognition for Officer Cothran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's with great honor that I present the Waynesboro Police Department lifesaving award to Officer Jacob Cothran. He was a vital key in this lifesaving event, and we have a wonderful emergency management system, or emergency services group around here, and we're truly blessed to have them here in the city, and I appreciate your service, James.
Now, it's my understanding that the individual who benefited from these services is present and might like to say a word. If I'm mistaken in that --
You could.
Yeah, terrific.
Hi, I'm Bob Tucker. I've worked with several of you. I just want to take this moment to acknowledge these people and this teamwork. It's truly an honor and my privilege to be able to stand here and talk about it. I have one other person that I wanted to recognize, a part of this team that saved my life, which they call a widow maker, by the way, because no preamble, and they got me up on the tables in 13 minutes. It was amazing. But Ms. Tammy Average, my sweetheart, who's a kindergarten teacher at Berkeley Glensey, she's another city employee who happened to start this whole thing out, but thank you so much, and these guys are heroes.
Yes.
They're heroes.
Awesome. Thank you all so much for being here this evening and for sharing that. Item five is to conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year 2018 Annual Action Plan for the city's entitlement allocation of community development block grant funds. Mr. Shaw? Give some folks some time here.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. In 2013, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, determined that the city of Waynesboro is eligible to receive annual funding through the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Communities Program. In August of 2013, the City Council adopted a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the city's status as an entitlement community, and by 2014, the City Council had adopted a five-year plan for, in the entitlement communities program. Historically, the city had competed for community development block grants that each year eligible communities and the Commonwealth can submit applications to the state, and we were fortunate to have received a number of those competitive grants through the years. Some of the more recent notable ones, the last one we received was a grant in 2011 for downtown revitalization work. Prior to that, the city had received a grant in 2009 for the Arch Avenue Market Street Housing Rehabilitation Program. We had received a grant to develop a neighborhood within the Third Street-Jackson Street neighborhood for homeownership opportunities, and then in 2004, we relocated a flood-prone mobile home park in the Race Avenue area. As I say, once you accept entitlement community status, then you receive an annual allocation of funding without the competitive grant process. Tonight, we provide the council an overview of the program, make some note of the uses of funding in previous years, and then hold a public hearing to allow public comment regarding the upcoming annual plan for the entitlement community funds. As noted, entitlement communities receive annual funding allocated on a HUD formula that uses objective measures of community needs, including the extent of poverty, overall population, housing overcrowding, and the age of housing. HUD awards grants to entitlement community grantees to carry out a wide range of community development activities directed at revitalizing neighborhoods, economic development, and providing improved community facilities and services. A priority of the program is to improve the living conditions and economic circumstance of low-to-moderate-income individuals. Waynesboro is slated to receive $198,586 in federal fiscal year 2018 and '19. During the five-year period that we've been a member of the entitlement communities program, we've received almost $1 million, about $930,000, including this year's allocation. The CDBG national objectives include providing benefits to low- and moderate-income persons as determined by HUD formula, and generally speaking, the rule of thumb is that someone, a family that earns 80% of the adjusted median family income in the community is considered to be low-to-moderate income. So, currently, a Waynesboro median family income is about $58,000 for a family of four. So, a family of four that is earning less than $47,000 is eligible under the program to receive benefit. Another objective of the program is to aid in the prevention and elimination of slums and blight, and that's a designation made locally where you have an area of your city where 25% of the buildings are considered deteriorated or deteriorating based on an evaluation of an architect and where there are high vacancy rates or turnover rates of those buildings. And then finally, CDBG monies can be used in urgent or emergency situations, and this most often occurs after some sort of a natural disaster to restore public services after a flood, for instance. Specifically, the funds can be used to rehabilitate single-family housing occupied by low- or moderate-income individuals. It can be used for neighborhood revitalization methods of various types, can be used for the construction of basic public infrastructure, water, sewer, stormwater projects, as well as park improvements, certain public services within federal guidelines and limits. An example might be to start a clinic for low- and moderate-income individuals. And then various revitalization activities in targeted business districts. And while we operated with a competitive CDBG grant, the types of things we've done in the downtown area in providing facade grants to property owners or doing streetscape work, landscaping, and those kinds of things. When the city of Waynesboro developed its consolidated plan, we met with various stakeholder groups and held public meetings and neighborhood meetings to develop a five-year plan, and broadly stated, the goals of the city's five-year consolidated plan are to provide decent and affordable housing in LMI neighborhoods, to provide safer and more livable neighborhoods, and finally, to expand the economic opportunities and empowerment of low- and moderate-income persons to achieve self-sufficiency. The areas in red are considered, according to census data, to be LMI neighborhoods, and so projects that occur in those neighborhoods are eligible under the grant program. As part of the five-year consolidated plan, we also develop a citizen participation plan that is meant to provide citizens with access to CDBG activity information, to provide public hearings, such as the one you're holding tonight, and then also, we're required to provide timely and written answers to any complaints, grievances, or program information Past CDBG program activities have included a number of housing rehabilitation, homeownership opportunity programs, or programs through the Waynesboro Redevelopment Housing Authority to prevent homelessness. We've done a number of projects that were basic infrastructure improvements in neighborhoods. We've pursued continued downtown revitalization efforts. We've done some park improvements, and then a portion of our proceeds also go to the Waynesboro Redevelopment Housing Authority as a grant administrator. You may be familiar with the rehabilitation of the parking lot beside the Wayne Theater and then the parking lot across the street on Main Street, both city Waynesboro public lots. We refer to the one as the Glen Alley Parking Lot, and we basically resurfaced the parking lots, put in pedestrian facilities and landscaping. This is a drainage problem that existed on Florence Avenue, and so we used CDBG funds to correct that drainage problem, and we've done a number of small stormwater projects similar to this one. We've pursued a number of water and sewer improvement projects within neighborhoods. We've done a couple of alley improvements, and we paired some money from the Department of Conservation Recreation to create a boat launch in Basic City Park. And as I noted, we've also done some housing rehab, so this was a home that benefited from the CDBG program through renovation. And again, in this type of a program, the homeowner was a qualifying LMI household. So as I say, this evening, we simply come to the council, provide this information, and then we're required to hold a public hearing. We'll return to council at the July 23rd meeting with a list of proposed projects for the upcoming federal fiscal year. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that council might have.
Any questions, Mr. Shaw? One question I might have, Shaw, is I know, I think this is my third time asking, but just for the record, because we basically, we go after the money that we almost are basically guaranteed, short of a congressional cut. We do that instead of going into the larger pool that has some risk in it, because we may walk away with less or nothing.
We had a pretty good run through the mid to late 2000s, where if you looked at a five-year period prior to going into the program, we actually had more money out of the competitive grant cycles than we have received in the five years we've been in the entitlement program. I would say, if you look at a couple of those projects, though, they were unique or peculiar in the type of competitive grant that you're simply not going to be able to expect that you would compete for, you know, even once a decade or once every two decades, like a downtown revitalization grant, that those are ones that are spread around the Commonwealth. The relocation of the Race Avenue Trailer Park was sort of a response to an emergency problem, and we also were able to pair FEMA money in that project. So there were a couple that I would say wouldn't be, you wouldn't expect to be able to compete for every few years. But the reality is that we had received more money through those grants. Now, one, I've also seen years that were pretty lean for Waynesboro, where we applied for and did not receive grants, and two, that whether they be the competitive grants or whether they be the entitlement funds that we accept annually, we've always partnered with Waynesboro Redevelopment and Housing Authority. And so, some of the projects, I think, you know, were well-crafted by the Housing Authority, and they were also able to bring their resources to bear in the project cost and administration and those kinds of things. And in the conversations I've had with Tom Carlson at the Housing Authority, I think he feels like if you had the staff resources to put applications together and then to administer the grants, that you might be able to continue to compete for a grant every three or four years. But that there is some certainty in being an entitlement community, and that in some ways, the ease of working with the entitlement community funds makes it a more attractive project. In other words, when you do a competitive grant, you really have to assemble a pretty discreet project. With entitlement community funds, you're able to look around your community and select a number of different things that you might like to do. Having said that, that's also sort of a downside, that oftentimes, you may feel as if, well, you're kind of piecemealing projects. You do small projects here and there rather than one big project in the neighborhood. I don't know that that answers your question, but I know that the concern is, are you better off being an entitlement grant community or competing, you know, for CDBG grants periodically?
When was the last time we took a dive into the larger pool?
2011.
2011?
Yeah.
Were we successful?
We were. That was the downtown revitalization grant. That was about a $770,000 grant. We also paired that with some money through the VDOT's TAP grants or enhancement grants, and then some city funds to --
The only reason I ask is, I mean, I see Sunset Park is technically in the LMI area as well, and so if we have a Sunset Park project, that if we had our standalone 190-some-thousand projects that were targeted through the Housing Authority, but then a supplemental standalone project to supplement other investments in Sunset, that might be?
I'm not sure I'm following exactly. Were you saying to use some of the entitlement money for Sunset Park?
No, if we were to --
Yeah.
To take a little bit of a gamble and go outside of the entitlement and go for a competitive?
The --
Only reason I saw, because I saw some folks this last round, you know, Front Royal, I think, double our annual entitlement allocation.
Right.
And someplace east of Charlottesville was almost triple. And I get it. I mean, it's a standalone, it is sort of a risk, but --
No, there's no doubt. All of the, or all of the different competitive grants that I mentioned, Arch Avenue and Market, that was nearly $600,000. The downtown program, again, about $770,000. The Jackson Third Street was almost a $600,000 grant, but you're getting those about every, you know, three years or so. I don't know that Sunset Park fits neatly into one of the eligible categories once you go to a competitive program. Generally, the competitive programs fall into one of three categories. One has to do with improving substandard housing. One has to do with downtown revitalization or the eradication of slums and blight, and one has to do with various types of economic development initiatives. And so, I've seen, for instance, where CDBG money was paired with Governor's Opportunity Fund money and, you know, to help develop an industrial park when you had a known prospect. So, a straight-up -- So, a straight-up park project, I'd have to get with the folks at the RHA, but at least in my research, I didn't see that type of a project.
I would just be curious to see, you know, just get your all's opinion if you think could be competitive or at least something worthy of consideration.
I think it is. I think it's, and now is a good time to have the conversation. What I might suggest, because you can opt out of the program, that we enter into the program initially with a five-year plan, so that we're in our fifth year. This will be the last year of allocation. As I look at the competitive grants, we're actually not listed as an eligible community right now, because we're an entitlement community. And the federal allocation has already been made for the city of Waynesboro. So, I don't know what it looks like getting out at this point in time, but I think between now and next year, if it's the conversation the council wants to have, is to, do you stay in the entitlement community, get your certain, usually, we get, you know, $180,000 to $200,000, or do you say, let's opt out? And, you know, then every few years, you're thinking, well, we will try for a competitive grant. And those tend to be more like $500,000, $600,000, $700,000.
I don't want to speak to Ms. Anderson, but I mean, we've had some conversations about wanting to try to align this program to, in some way, accelerate some of the improvements on the east side, and so, residents on the east side of the city might benefit from that. So, that's basically where the heart of that question's coming from.
Yeah.
If I could tag the question into that, what does happen after our fifth year here? Do we have to reapply to become eligible, or is it something that just rolls over?
My understanding is that the eligibility is maintained from everything that we see now. In other words, that the demographics of the community, those kinds of things haven't changed dramatically. But I'm under the impression that you basically have to update your five-year plan and some things like that. But at least as we sit here today, it looks like we would be eligible again to be an entitlement community.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right. With that, I hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak this evening.
Okay. I hereby close the public hearing. No reaction is required this, tonight. So, move on to item number six. Ordinance releasing specific provisions of proffers associated with Waynesboro Place Planned Unit Development. Item six is to consider introducing an ordinance to amend Waynesboro Place Planned Unit Development proffers by releasing specific provisions pertaining to the construction or reconfiguring of the I-64, exit 94, westbound off-ramp, including its storage, taper, and turn lanes. Ms. Mike Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Virginia Code Section 15.2, 2302-V, which relates to amendments to subdivision flats, allows a local body to waive a public hearing associated with the proposed amendment when the proposed amendment, or amendment to the proffer does not affect the conditions of use or density. And as Mr. Shaw will explain shortly, the proposed amendments to the Waynesboro planned, Waynesboro Place Planned Unit Development amendments do not affect the conditions of use or density. So, here, the waiver of a public hearing pursuant to Virginia Code Section 15.2, 2302, is applicable and appropriate in this instance, and therefore, I would recommend that a motion to waive the public hearing relating to the Waynesboro Place Planned Unit Development amendments.
Okay. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to waive the public hearing requirements?
So...
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero, Spurle. And Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council. In 2010, the Waynesboro City Council approved a rezoning request for roughly 43-acre tract located east of Home Depot on Windy Grove Drive. And the rezoning application created the Waynesboro Place Planned Unit Development. Planned unit development basically is a development proposal that outlines the various uses and densities within the development, and also describes certain design characteristics of the development. And so, it becomes de facto zoning for that property. And the first evidence of development there were the Windy Grove Apartments, if you're familiar with those, at the end of Windy Grove Drive. Part of the acceptance of the planned unit development included proffers from the developer. Those are voluntary offers of improvements, and they were almost exclusively related to either proffer for the development plan or coded development itself, and then traffic improvements. An exhaustive traffic study was completed to understand the development impact of traffic on the city streets over a period of time of the development. And the proffers were structured in such a way that there were a set of improvements that had to be made with the first phase of development, based on the traffic that was expected to be generated in the first phase of development, more than 3,000 vehicle trips a day. And then, there was a second phase of development proffers that were required once the development traffic exceeded about 3,700 vehicle trips a day. The first phase of improvements, road improvements, were completed prior to the issuance of a building permit for the Windy Grove Apartments. The Windy Grove Apartments and the entire first phase of, the Windy Grove Apartments generate somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200 or 1,300 vehicle trips a day. And even with the rest of development that could occur in that first phase, we're somewhat below the ceiling. We don't really have a good sense of when the second phase of development will occur. One of the provisions of the proffer said that if the second phase improvements weren't made within five years, then a subsequent traffic study would have to be completed prior to moving forward with issuing building permits beyond the 3,000, 3,700 vehicle trips a day. And that five years has passed. And so, where we sit today, and the reason that this is brought before you, one of the proffers was included improvements to be made to the westbound exit ramp of I-64 at exit 94 onto Rossar Avenue. And currently, the Stanton Augusta Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the regional transportation organization of which we are a member, and basically helps with the dispersment of federal funds for highway improvements, and VDOT would like to pursue state funds and federal funds to correct traffic problems at that interstate ramp. However, the program guidelines wouldn't allow that funds would be applied where a developer has made a proffer. And so, I guess, simply put, this is a little bit of a bird-in-the-hand situation, is we don't know when the developer might move forward with development at such a level that it would require them to complete the improvements. VDOT would like to move forward now and really would complete a more comprehensive set of improvements, but we would have to release the developer from the proffer. If there's any risk here, it would be that the developer could find a prospect for development that then would exceed the level of traffic that would have required them to make the improvements, and VDOT won't move forward with their project as quickly. I don't, as I sit here today, see that as a very likely scenario. But I'm, there's no requirement of the developer to make me privileged to all of their development plans and the prospects that they might have. However, as I look at the market and I look at what was contained in that second set of improvements, that isn't a scenario that's very likely in our current market. It was generally larger, sort of mid-box retailers, and those just aren't the types of prospects that a lot of communities are getting right now. And as I say, we've already passed a five-year period, which would still require the developer to come back, revise their traffic study, and then there would be a conversation about what improvements they might have to make to the roadway anyway. So, I think there's some protection in that provision. But that's a long-winded way of saying that if we'd like for the MPO and VDOT to pursue a comprehensive solution to that interstate ramp, one of the things that we would need to do in the immediate future would be to release this proffer. With that said, I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there any timeline on when VDOT would start work on that, once the proffer's been released?
It's a little unclear that when, this would be an application through what is known as the Smart Scale Program. The Smart Scale Program replaced the old six-year improvement plan. So, the way the program works, that if you're awarded money in the Smart Scale, then the work has to be programmed within a six-year period. And so, for instance, right now, we have Smart Scale money being applied to the construction of an extension of Shindoa Village Drive, the southern connector through the city's industrial park. And it's, you know, budgeted in a six-year allocation. So, you know, you start out with engineering, then you go to right-of-way acquisition, then you start into construction, but it's a six-year program. The conversations that I've had with VDOT staff are that they might like to move money forward in the program, but that's really a little uncertain now. So, I would say, your worst-case scenario is it's a six-year program. Your best-case scenario is that funds would be moved forward and completed in a more timely fashion.
As I recall, in the spring, there was a discussion with the developers about new changes to the development plan, and less retail and more housing.
That's correct.
And how does that affect sort of this...
What happened in the spring was that developer requested that some of the development proposal be, would shift from the retailing to additional multifamily complex of 120 units. And essentially, what it did was reduced the expected traffic generation from that same area. So, in other words, an apartment complex per unit generates less traffic than retailing does or restaurants do per square foot. And so, it actually served to reduce what would have been expected in terms of trip generation on the same land area.
When's the last time we did a traffic study or traffic count on that road?
Traffic counts are done at least every two years. We're actually going through a study right now that includes counts of the corridor, you know, of the South 340, Rossar Avenue corridor, that we and VDOT have concerns about signal timing out there, that the lights on that corridor had originally been all coordinated. And currently, some are controlled by the city of Waynesboro, some are controlled by VDOT. As you get to the interstate ramps, those are VDOT-controlled lights. And so, we and VDOT believe there are efficiency gains to be had by doing a study of the signals in the corridor, and then probably, you'll have recommendations for improvements to the basic infrastructure of the signals, as well as how they're timed. But to your direct question, there's at least a count every couple of years, and then, but right now, there, you know, that information is more current because of the study that's taking place.
Is the count we're looking for at the intersection of Windy Grove and Rossar?
That's one of the, would be one of the places, yeah.
How much increase have we had from residents off of Chatham and that part?
Right.
Coming in once we opened it up, and then, I don't know what the status is on the hotel that we had looked at before?
Right.
Down behind Wendy's, of how much, does all that impact what goes with Waynesboro Place?
Yes. And that's part of the traffic study requirement, is that it's what's considered background traffic. In other words, the developer gives you an estimate of what they think their development is going to generate in terms of traffic, but then they also have to evaluate what's already on the roadway and what would be expected to be on the roadway over some period of time. And there is both art and science to that projection of considering, well, how much traffic's coming in on 340 from Sturridge Draft, or how much does interstate traffic pick up? And in fact, that's part of the genesis of this five-year reset, was that at the time, we negotiated with the developer to do a five-year background increase projection. And then, we said, well, if you don't go beyond that five years, if you're not willing to make a projection beyond that, then if you don't get your improvements in place in five years, you have to revisit the traffic study. But yes, absolutely, there has to be a consideration of what else is on the roadway. Now, having said that, the developer's only responsible for their impact. They aren't held responsible for all of the generation once you get beyond the rezoning. The rezoning is the point in time you say, well, can the public infrastructure basically handle, you know, the traffic that's already on the roadway? And then, the developer has to figure out how the public infrastructure handle his trip generation.
I don't remember, but when we were looking at the Lad property, was that could be a side street coming off on the Windy Grove, or was everything will be in and out off of Rossar?
The Lad property had its main entrances on Rossar, but there was a requirement that they leave a right-of-way that actually, I'm trying to remember where it connected exactly, whether it was the property that goes with the Tiffany Apartments. I think that was it. There was definitely a requirement that there was this right-of-way left. It wasn't going to be constructed, but there was a right-of-way to be left, so that there could be a second access point for that property.
Any other questions? If they're not hearing so, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Do I need a second?
Yes, sir.
No.
Okay. All right. And moving on, number seven, an ordinance conferring police powers on the deputy fire marshal. Item seven is to consider introducing ordinance conferring police powers to the deputy fire marshal. Mr. Ham.
Yes, sir. Thank you. In May of 2013, the Waynesboro Fire Department hired its first deputy fire marshal. Prior to that, the fire chief served as the city's fire official, and he can, in fact, continues to do so under the current arrangement. Inspection duties at that time were distributed among shift personnel. With the establishment of the deputy fire marshal position, activities of fire prevention through inspection, investigation, and related functions have become incorporated into a prioritized and organized regular plan of inspection in response to complaints related to fire safety. As such, the fire marshal can play a supportive and important role in property maintenance and public safety. In that role, the fire marshal or deputy pursues work at some risk and threat to their own personal safety. Presently, Waynesboro's deputy fire marshal does not operate with police powers conferred by the Code of Virginia at local option. It is recommended that the city council confer those police powers to the deputy fire marshal by ordinance and resolution. Doing so expands the deputy fire marshal's summons authority, investigative responsibility and authority, confers arrest authority, and authorizes the individual to carry a firearm. These measures will improve the effectiveness and efficiency of the program of investigation by reducing reliance on sworn law enforcement personnel, oftentimes pressed to meet criminal caseloads. Before these authorities can be conferred or exercised, the individual must complete extensive training in the form of a 10- to 12-week academy. Most neighboring localities have already conferred police powers to their deputy fire marshal or their fire marshal responsible for investigation and inspection. The powers would not confer to subordinate employees who also assist with investigation, inspection, and public education responsibilities. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Ham?
Am I right in thinking that this would then be perpetuated to the role of deputy fire marshal, not to the individual that's currently serving, but that the next person might have to, would have to meet the same requirements?
Absolutely. Or not enjoy the authority.
Great question. Any other questions? Okay. Is there a, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Number eight, to consider reappointing a member of the economic development... Number eight, to consider reappointing a member of the Economic Development Authority to an unexpired four-year term ending August 30th, 2019, and to consider appointing an individual to the authority for a four-year term ending August 30th, 2022. Mr. Hamp?
Mr. James Heisen is presented for the opportunity for reappointment to the four-year term, and Mr. Mark Snyder is presented for consideration to the full four-year term that would expire 2022.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to make the appointments?
So-
Is there a second?
Second.
Questioner, is any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I was trying to thank Mr. Heisen and Mr. Snyder for their service. Item seven B, is that correct, is to consider making a reappointment and an appointment to the Library Board of Trustees, each four-year terms ending August 30th, 2022. Mr. Hamp?
So the reappointment, individual candidate for reappointment is Dr. Amy Tillerson Brown. Her term would be a four-year term expiring on August 31st, 2022. And the appointment of Ms. Edith Ekman to the Library Board of Trustees, also a four-year term expiring August 31st, 2022.
Wonderful. Any questions? Is there a motion to make the appointment?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Allen? Is there a second?
Second.
Anderson? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, two ladies, for your service. Item seven C is to consider reappointing Mike Hamp to the Valley Community Services Board to a three-year term ending June 30th, 2021. Mr. Hamp? Self-explanatory?
Self-explanatory.
All right. Any questions? Is there a motion to make that appointment?
I'll make a motion.
Shaw, is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Hustedter? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda this evening is communication, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hamp?
Two fun items. A reminder that the Rock in Ridgeview series continues every Thursday in July, and this week is chamomile, chamomile and whiskey. And this Saturday is the community's extravaganza in Ridgeview Park from 10:00 a.m. until 10:30 p.m.
Sounds like explosive good times.
That's all I have.
Okay. Next on the agenda is citizen comment period. Mr. Hamp?
Mr. Tom McDonald.
Please state your name and address. Where's the podium, Mr. McDonald? Thank you.
Tom McDonald, 1117 Club Road. Good evening. On behalf of my wife and myself, I'd like to welcome our new city council members, Dr. Hustedter and Mr. Henderson, as our new councilman and vice mayor. I'd also like to congratulate Terry Short on his appointment as mayor, and thank Bruce Allen for his dedicated work as mayor for the last six years. On a different note, Mayor Short, I read in the News-Virginian that one of your priorities is to reinstate the frozen positions in our police department. I truly believe this is a very important issue. Waynesboro's a great city, but we must keep in mind that to keep the status of a great city, we must have a safe city. It takes a completely staffed and fully equipped public safety department to accomplish this. So I hope all these vacancies will be filled soon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to, any other comments from council members? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.